...to help to actually get them through this process of the rezoning, the conditional use permit. I told them I would offer my services to help them do that. What they have done is they have prepared the applications, prepared the maps, prepared all the justifications and so on and forth, so forth, and I just assisted them to get to that process. And it worked, it's a good working relationship that we have. They did all the work, I did the review, and we got this submitted in. Tonight's presentation, we're going to talk about a project that's probably a very unique project in a location that's probably very appropriate for where it's being proposed. During this presentation tonight, you're going to hear the applicant talk about who is Rampart Investment Group. You'll find out they're a local company, they're a family business here in Wilshire Park. We're asking you to look at a request for a zone change and a conditional use permit and a site plan. You'll hear about the project description of the project, and it's very important that this particular project is being developed in phases, and we'll be talking about that. You'll hear about the history of this property. This property used to be owned by CDOT and used by CDOT for a good many years. We want to talk about the surrounding uses and how this use should be perceived as a transitional use and how we can mitigate the impacts to the particular neighborhood. We're also going to talk about the benefits that will occur both to the applicant, the neighborhood, and to the community. And we'll talk about how those issues that have been identified can be mitigated. You'll certainly hear about the justification for the zone change, how the conditional use permit criteria will be met, and you'll, we'll talk about the planning department's recommendation and how we support that. So with that, I'm going to leave it over to the applicants, Rick and Ann, and they will offer the presentation to you and hopefully answer all the questions that you may have at this time. So again, Rick, Ann, please.
Can you folks, you're okay back there?
Well, we'll see how we go here. I'm not a planner, I'm just a hard-working contractor. I've been here since 1965. I'm here with my wife, Ann, my son Travis, and his wife, Hope. We have been in the community, seems like forever. I went to grade school here. I'm pretty well vested in the community. I know some of you people up there through, maybe I don't know your name, but I've seen your face before. But what we're trying to do here is, we saw this piece of property that CDOT used to own. CDOT owned this property since 1965, back when, some of you know, back when the KOA campground used to be back west there before Karen Lane and all that was developed. But CDOT used this property, very similar to what we're going to use it for. They had an impact which would be greater. They used it for their snowplow operation, their maintenance. They stored their trucks there. They also stored their road graders and all their maintenance, and plus they had probably six to eight personnel there at the time. As you know, CDOT moved their operation up to Divide. When they left that, they knew, well, several years before they left that, they knew that they weren't going to do too much more to that property than they had to. And so as you can see, when we got there to look at the buildings and the sites, they were pretty poor need of repair. I mean, you can drive by there and see that needs paint, needs a lot of work done. But we saw this as an opportunity for, we think, the city needs, and that is for contractor storage and warehousing. As contractors go, as electrician, or as a plumber, or excavator, or any of us in the contracting business, we really have no place to go. We have no place to park a dump truck, we have no place for concrete guys to store their blankets and that type of thing. So we thought this was a perfect facility, a perfect need for us to have. Do you want to go ahead and move forward? Anyhow, I think, as you can see, we're pretty well committed to the community and what we want to do with this project. We see this project very personal to us. Within our business, we also feel like we have a lot of gratitude in the stuff that we do, and we think that this project will show you that also. As you can see in this one picture here, this is just the condition of the buildings. This was the main garage area that they had, and this overhead view here, you can see the buildings. There's going to be probably a total of three made buildings, major buildings, and then we got the tanks, the storage tanks that they used to use. So we've already talked about the zoning change from suburban residential to community commercial. What we're going to do inside with this is we're going to hopefully have more inside storage that we can have as contractors, because most of the stuff that we do at this facility is going to be storage. It's not going to be where we're coming and going all day, it's not going to be retail situation. Typically, we'll come in there in the morning and get parts and leave. Some days, we won't even be there unless we need something. Most of the contractors actually will be, go to their sites and do their work, and we envision this as being a place they can come and actually get materials and supplies, more so than be in a retail situation. What we're going to have here is, we're trying to get this approved so we can go ahead and start some landscaping and some minor painting. We've already kind of started a little bit of that now. We want to remove the old storage tanks. There's some old storage tanks. If anybody has a need for some storage tanks, we'd be happy to give them to you. The storage tanks currently are empty. The tanks were used by CDOT to do their solution on the highways before the snow, and so they're basically just sitting there empty right now, but we would like to get rid of those and get those off the site. The other plan would be there with the storage units would be to, with a storage tank, to possibly have some more additional buildings on the site, and that will be taken more in the stage, in the Phase Two situation. Right here, we could probably explain to you a little bit about the facility as it is now. On the outside, if you can see the green lines to the outside, those are existing fences that are, that have been in place that CDOT had there. They're just basically a, oh, what would you call those? Chain link fences, chain link fences. Security on both sides. And then on the red line is, we have some privacy fence to the north and privacy fence that's existing to the east. As you can see, some areas there that we're going to have, back over here to the, to the south, that's going to be our open space. We'll leave that as open space with trees and landscape, and then on the corner, we're also going to leave that as open space and do some, maybe a future sign. The future sign that we would put there, we're not, it's not going to be a lighted sign. We're not, we're not really in a situation where we're trying to advertise our businesses there. This is more of a storage area and a facility to use. This building number two, the building number two that we are currently using on the, would be on the west side. That building there, we're going to hopefully eventually paint and do some repair there, and we like to have it to be similar to what our future building was going to be also. You can see a future secondary access we're proposing. That access would be so we could easily maybe get in and out of, with trucks and possibly change the format of inside the facility there. We might fence off the future storage building separate from the main buildings. The, if you can see the racks back to the, the existing racks that are back on the east side, those were storage racks that the State Highway Department had there, and they used to hang their sanders off of. We see that area there is going to be outside storage area that will be screened off to where you can't see any of the storage goods that we're going to have in there. And really, I think that's about it on that part. Let's continue. We talked about having the two different, the two different phases. The first phase is going to allow us to basically operate as we are right now, would help us to, to get people to maybe rent some space in there and give us some time to get our engineering and studies done. We're going to have some drainage issues, we know, in there that we're going to have to deal with and get some design for that, as well as our traffic study. We have to do a survey in there, and so we're going to need a little bit of time, and that will help us to keep moving forward and operating our business as it exists. The other thing is the Contractor and Construction Service, the storage uses would just be allowed to continue until Phase Two is approved. You can see this, this is our entrance to the facility that we have now. That'd be the front entrance. We propose to probably put a electric gate across the front, redo the fencing there. The fencing is in poor shape. You can kind of see the one building that we actually started to do a little painting on the end that we got to do some repair. And this is what we would call Building Number One. This is our building number two, which is to the west side. This is the sand building. This building here, the reason that we, the dirt is up against this building, the State Highway Department stored their sand in there. And with the weight of the sand on the inside of the building, they put dirt up against the edges to help hold the force by the sand pushing out. That will say, and that dirt will go away, and we hope that we can clean that up and make it look a little bit different. This, what you're seeing right here, would be on the, on the outside storage area that you probably never see anyway. But that would be the proposed, to do that with that building. These are the tanks that we'd like to get rid of. And we're just really trying to get the process going here with no later than two years after the approval of the zoning change. This here is the privacy fence. These are the two homes that we had to the north, and this is also going to be our future storage building site. That would be on the north end of the problem, of the property. This would be kind of an example of what we foresee, not so much maybe of exactly the shape of the building, but the color scheme. We're hoping to have raised roofs, and that's something we'll probably work close with the city staff to come up with a good-looking building. The surrounding uses here, on the north side, we have a single-family residences to the north. On the northwest, we have an apartment complex. On the west side, we've got a single-family residence, south side, single-family. And then we adjoining the RV park on the east side. So that, and that's also going to be on, they're also zoned on the CC zoning. These are just more pictures of the adjacent homeowners. We did have a, one thing I need to say, we did have a neighborhood meeting. The neighborhood meeting was pretty productive. We had a lot of support from all the adjoining property owners. They came, we listened to their needs and concerns. With our business, one thing we want to make sure of is that we understand that if we have times of operation, that might be a problem with them. If there's something we can do to mitigate such things as noise, lighting, or hours of operation, that type of thing, we want them to know that they have access to us as owners, we're going to be there. This isn't a property that we're going to develop and never go over there. So if there's concern, we have some different ways to mitigate that, that type of thing to go through that. So I think that as far as the transitional use, the project is really in between commercial and on the east and the residential uses on the north. So we really think that the zoning does make sense for the area. I really don't think there's much more. I don't know if you have, if you want to move on forward on that. I don't know if we need to talk anymore about that. Larry, do you think we need to address the other issue?
I really think that when we start talking about some of the benefits with our family-owned business, I think we talked about that, be it really invest in the community. The CDOT property was in poor condition. We're hoping to make that stand out as a project that everybody should be proud of. CDOT, CDOT really was pretty intense with the, with the, with the neighborhood. You know, those people would come in and they would go all hours of the night, and they would operate their equipment, which we won't be doing that. We do snowplowing as a contractor, but for us, it's just a matter of going in and picking up a piece of equipment with a pickup truck and leaving, and I doubt that anybody would really know we're going to be there. Like I said, we're very happy to try and mitigate any impacts with the people we've already talked to. Within, within the contractors we work with, we know that there's a need that they have, and we're just going to try and make, make the property look good.
I also wanted to say that we intend to have an open-door policy with the neighbors. We really encourage them to come talk to us if they're having any issues with noise or lights or anything like that, and that's one of the reasons we had the neighborhood meeting and invited all the neighbors to come. We did send out 23 letters, and we had about eight people show up, and most of those people were in favor of the project because they didn't like the fact that the, the property had been vacant for so long and was deteriorating so badly. So anyway, that's my two cents.
And I really think that's about, about all we have. I don't know if you have some questions you'd like to ask us? We'd be happy to, to answer them if we're, have the ability, I guess.
We'll let Laura come up, present the staff's presentation, and then we'll reopen for questions.
All right. Thank you. I think the one thing we talked about too, we did bring that up, is the, the hours of operation for us. I know we requested at one time to be five days a week from seven to dusk. The situation we have is, with us, is that if, if one of you called me tonight and said I have a sewer break or a water break or something like that, we get a lot of that. There will be times, occasionally there'll be some times, where we're going to have to be at the property. We don't, we truly don't have business hours. Contractors, we don't have a business hour, so to speak, to say that we operate seven to five, five days a week. With our business, that's just how we, we operate. There may be times when we do have to get to our property on a Saturday and get a piece of equipment or get some materials or something out. So that's the one thing that we would like to change on the condition on the number two to state. We're, we're going to try and stay within, obviously, any type of noise or any type of regulations that the city has. We definitely want to try and do that, but we just might need to modify to do that, because we are going to have some occasional and unforeseen circumstance that do, that does come up. We're not talking it's going to happen every day, but there are some times we do need to obviously get into the facility.
All right.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to read the proposed revision to Condition Number Two that's up there, just for the record. So the applicant's asking that Number Two be revised to state regular hours of operation will be dawn to dusk seven days a week and may include occasional unforeseen circumstances such as early morning snowplowing and other emergencies. So that is a little bit of a difference.
All right. So this is the Bowman Contractor Services and Storage Yard. It's an application to rezone the entire site from single-family residential, from suburban residential, to the Community Commercial Zone District, and it's also an application for a conditional use permit to allow the contractor services and to allow the warehousing and storage uses. This is an aerial showing the site. The entire site is outlined in red, and you can see the existing buildings and the tanks that the applicant's already described. What this site also shows is the adjoining and adjacent streets and avenues and also the adjoining uses. So for instance, here is the Bristol Cone Campground immediately to the east on this entire site here. Here to the north is the Calico Court Higher Density Subdivision, and then here you see the Nazarene Church on this entire site here, the fire department here in this facility. The Sherman Park Apartments are right here. This is the city's Red Mountain Adventure Park, right here. And then single-family residences along Bowman Avenue here to the south and a little bit to the west, and of course Coraline Street going north-south. And Highway 67, which is very proximate to the site, makes it a desirable use for this type of proposed use, is right here, immediately a half a block to the east. So again, these are photos. These photos were taken from Google Earth, and they show it while it was still operated and occupied by CDOT, which is kind of interesting. So here you see the CDOT sign at the main entrance off of Bowman, coming into here, and you can see some of the CDOT equipment that was stored on site. You can see some of the conditions of the existing buildings and the facilities, employees parking here. This photo here up at the top is a photo from the Teller County Assessors Database, shows you a little bit of some of the dilapidated condition of some of the buildings, and the applicant, as he stated, is working right now and has improved some of these facades and is working to improve with paint some of the facades as well, other, on the other buildings. So this is standing on Bowman looking west, and here you see the edge of the Bristol Cone RV Park, and now we start looking into the property itself, looking northwest into the property. So you can see some of the existing landscaping that exists along Bowman. You see the chain link fence that the applicant spoke about, and the edge of the right-of-way of Bowman, and you can see that there is no sidewalk along Bowman on this side. And so this gives you a really good idea of some of the existing conditions on the Let me just, so this one down here is looking from Coraline south. Again, from the corner here, you can see some of the residential development, and then where the chain link fence starts, you're looking into the site. And again, this is when it was a CDOT property, and so some of these vehicles that you're seeing here are CDOT vehicles. So this is what Coraline looks like. Again, the apartments are here immediately to the west. You can see there are no sidewalks on Coraline either, and you can see the drainage along Coraline and the chain link fence that exists, and some of the existing trees, and again, the site here. And this is the privacy fence along the north border. This is from the intersection of Coraline and Bowman, so here we are looking east down Bowman, and this is looking north down Coraline, and at this corner is where the applicant would, is proposing a sign somewhere in here, and as he said, it would be a low-impact sign with no lighting, just to identify the facility. And this shows you the location of Building Number Two, Building Number One, the tanks, and there's Building Number Three. So this is looking into the site northeast. Down below here is, again, at the intersection of Coraline, which is this street right here, and Bowman, which is this street right here. It's a stop sign here at Coraline as it intersects Bowman. And then what you're also seeing is the residential single-family homes immediately on the other side of this intersection, and behind the stop sign is also single-family residential. So this gives you an idea of what some of the perimeter roads look like and some of the existing homes. This is the zoning map. The site is here, this yellow's rectangle or square, and what it shows you is that it's currently zoned yellow, which is suburban residential, and that's what you're seeing in the zoning to the south, and this small strip along Bowman here on this side. And for the most part, those are fully developed with single-family residences. To the north, you're also seeing what is Zoned PUD, and it's just a higher-density residential little enclave off of Calico Court. In the pink, it is Community Commercial, pretty much all along Highway 67 for the most part, and this is the Bristol Cone RV Park. And the brown is the multifamily residential, multifamily urban, sorry, Zone District, which is the apartments. And then this is the adventure park and the fire, fire hall. So this gives you the site and the surrounding zonings. The applicant is looking to rezone from single-family residential, from the yellow to the pink, which is Community Commercial. This is the comprehensive plan, the 2010 comprehensive plan that currently exists and is up for revision next year. The star indicates the site. The community plan, the comprehensive plan, shows that this is proposed as single-family residential, this particular site. And you can see, again, immediately adjacent, this is commercial development is, is the vision for that, and multifamily and city properties or public services. So the plan and the vision for this property is single-family residential. This is the site. The applicant pretty well described it, it is, is his proposal, and again, he gave a pretty good description of it. I'm not going to spend much time on it. It is a phased construction, so a lot of what you see will be enhanced architecturally, painted, landscaping installed, and they'll be using it with storage for the most part for contractor services. And then Phase Two will be this future storage building, which will be self-storage, and he's proposing a future secondary access, and this entire north quadrant, or this north one quarter, will be perhaps fenced off and separate from the contractor service yard. So staff did a complete analysis of the rezoning application. When we check for applicants who are submitting a rezoning application, we ask six questions. These are in the staff report, and I'm just going to briefly touch on them just for the record. So is the application to rezone consistent with a comprehensive plan map? Well, I showed you the map. The map shows that the vision for this area in the future is residential. So the answer to that question is no. However, staff believes that a rezoning would be appropriate and applicable to the site given that the adjacent use is commercial, and the vision on the comprehensive plan for the adjacent use is commercial as well. And because of this adjacency and this buffer, staff believes that it would be compatible on this site. So the question number two that we ask, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan goals and objectives? Yes. Staff believes there's many goals and objectives you can pull from economic development to just providing opportunities for commercial businesses within the city to operate. So there are many policies, goals, and objectives that would apply to make this rezoning appropriate. What has changed on this site? Not much has changed. As the applicant said, it's been used by CDOT as pretty much a contractor stor- As the applicant said, it's been used by CDOT as pretty much a contractor storage yard for CDOT since almost 1965. And the area around it has pretty much built up around it. So, CDOT pretty much preceded any development around it. And then, the homes started coming in and the apartments came in. And so, the impact was always there even with the CDOT yard. Not much has changed, and that's why staff believes this is an appropriate use for a rezoning to commercial and an appropriate conditional use permit for the contractor services and warehousing uses that the applicant is proposing. Is the location appropriate for the community commercial zone? Yes. And again, the primary reason for this is because it's immediately adjacent to an existing commercial zone, and this is a logical extension and expansion of that commercial zone, plus the history of the site, as we've already mentioned a few times. Is there adequate water? Is it available, considering the density that they're proposing? Yes, there is adequate water to serve the site if it were to be rezoned to community commercial and if a conditional use permit for the contractor and warehouse uses were approved. And same with wastewater. And is it appropriate for the density that's being proposed? Yes, there is enough capacity in the wastewater system run by the city to accommodate the use as proposed. So, staff does find substantial compliance and does recommend approval of the rezone from suburban residential to CC, community commercial. So, staff also did a complete review and analysis of the conditional use standards for a conditional use permit. There are 11 standards and criteria that we review when we have an application for a conditional use permit. And I'm, again, briefly going to touch on these. A more detailed explanation is in the staff report that was distributed to all of you. So, is there need and is the proposed conditional uses, are they mitigated? There is a need. The applicant talked a little bit about the need for the business to have this type of a location. Its proximity to Highway 67, its previous uses, the fact that CDOT made upgrades to the entrance to handle things like equipment and vehicles and heavier trucks, that it's fenced around the perimeter, that the uses have already been occurring pretty much since 1965, and that the residential area built around an already existing storage and contractor service yard. So, the applicant is proposing various mitigation measures. They are looking at landscaping. They are, right now, they've cleaned up the site. They're also looking at painting, and then, they're looking at improving the site in the future with phase-two additional buildings. So, is there any harm or injury to public health and welfare? Staff does not believe that there is, that the use as conditioned would not be injurious to the surrounding public health and welfare. Will there be any injury to surrounding property values? Staff does not believe there will be. And the fact that this is a dilapidated site currently vacant, with the applicant proposing to come in, occupy it, upgrade it, is something that would probably improve property values. Would it harmonize with the surrounding uses? Yes, again, it's immediately adjacent to a community commercial zone, which is what this applicant is proposing. Does it comply with city plans? Does it comply with city regulations? We talked a little bit already about the comprehensive plan, and staff's belief that it does comply with the plan. Staff also believes it complies with the zoning regulations. If the conditional use permit is approved as conditioned, it would meet all of the zoning regulations. It would meet the building permits requirements and all zoning development permit requirements for any proposed construction in the future. The applicant will be required to plat this before any construction. So, it will meet all the city regulations as it goes through different phases of construction and development. The applicant did do a traffic trip generation letter, which proposed 55 average vehicle trips for the site, given its proposed use. That is probably less than what CDOT had with all of its heavy equipment coming in and out of there, given the description that the applicant has provided for you for his proposed use. Are there any impacts or injury to the environment, soils, slopes, streams, hazards? There are no hazards onsite. There are no streams or other environmental features onsite. The staff has asked that they preserve as many of the existing trees onsite, and there are a few. The soils and the slopes are adequate for the development as proposed. Will the conditional use adequately meet, comply with all of the water and wastewater and other utility connections? Yes, staff does believe that there is adequate and available service for water and wastewater to this site. Will there be any public danger because of this conditional use permit? Staff does not believe so. They are not proposing to store any dangerous equipment or explosive items or any of that type of stuff. And finally, aesthetics. How have they addressed things like architecture, fencing, landscaping, and buffers? And they are proposing to upgrade the architecture with paint and landscaping and enhance the fencing with the screening area and buffers. They will meet all the setbacks. So, staff does find substantial compliance with the conditional use permit standards and does recommend approval with conditions. And again, what I've done is just touch on the conditions. There are nine conditions in the staff report. One, the first condition is that prior to October 31st, that the applicant paints, cleans, landscapes, and screens areas that are proposed to be outdoor storage. They are already in the process of painting some of the buildings. They've cleaned up the site considerably, given that it's been vacant and a little bit derelict since CDOT vacated it. And they are proposing some landscaping immediately or certainly before October 31st. Now, condition number two, staff does not object to the changes as proposed by the applicant. We do realize that there are emergency circumstances that would warrant access to this site beyond 9:00 PM or before 7:00 AM on a Saturday and Sunday, and staff doesn't object to the proposed change as submitted by the applicant. Lighting must be downcast, shielded, warm, 3,000 Kelvin or warmer, and no higher than 25 feet. There is no storage of explosives or other dangerous materials allowed on this site. No odor, smoke, vibration, glare, or particulates may extend beyond the property boundary. This CUP as a clarification statement is not a noise relief permit and that they will be subject to the noise standards in our nuisance code. Condition number seven, 15% of the lot must remain as open space. Condition number eight, preserve existing trees. And finally, condition number nine, prior to building, the applicant must do a final site plan, showing where all the landscaping is going to be, where all the parking's going to be, where everything is finally going to be. They have to do a final plat to plat it before they can construct on it. And they have to submit all of the zoning development permits and building permits required with any more construction. So, those are the nine conditions related to the conditional use permit. And again, staff is recommending approval as condition. That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It'd be time to entertain any questions we have for the applicant or staff.
I have a question for staff. Is there any need to mitigate the contamination of the soil? Obviously, salt's been stored there. Is that a problem, not only for this site but for the adjacent sites?
The applicant did a thorough environmental impact assessment on this. 200-plus pages, yeah. And truly, they found that most of the impacts that had been created from the CDOT use, like the salt and/or the underground fuel tanks that were there way back in the '70s, have all been removed. It's all been mitigated. No additional mitigation is required.
Other questions?
In reading this before, I guess I wasn't adequately attentive. I looked at the conditional uses that are authorized. First, of course, the main one, it appeared, the Contractors and Construction Services. The second one, 1809-090V. I guess I just read the first section of that, thinking this is commercial search of storage. I hadn't appreciated that there was a self-storage warehouse, another one provided here. I didn't... And self-storage, you referred to it here. I didn't see those terms used anywhere in the staff report. We've seen a lot about self-storage around here. I guess conditional use permit is authorized. What was your language? There's a demonstrated need at the particular site. This is fairly near the center of the city, now being developed as a commercial site. There's a lot of self-storage around here. I'm not convinced that there is a demonstrated need that this site have another self-storage facility. The other search of storage seems to fit with the business of the applicant. And I'd say, I hadn't seen it before, but as reading and hearing reference to self-storage and looking, that that part includes the self-storage subsection. And I don't know if anyone else thought about it, too. It seems to me we've got enough of this. The first part of that section for sort of commercial wholesale kind of storage and such seems to match up with what the applicant proposes. And I don't have objection to that. It seems to fit within the whole pattern. But that's my view. I don't know if there's any comments on it or the like.
Well, I think that would be a good question for the applicant. I don't know if you've done a market study to determine a need for the self-storage or if you want to talk about that. But the site would be appropriate for self-storage.
Well, now, the standard of the ordinance is not, is there demonstrated need that that site be used for this? It's not, is it an appropriate use? We've talked about language. We've talked about changing the language of the conditional use permit. As written, it's fairly strict, and I don't see it meeting the requirements for that use. Did you follow the point I'm making, too?
Yes.
The storage has got several components, and self-storage had not been referred to, and I'm questioning that particular use.
Well, what we did a market analysis on was contractor storage, which is different from self-storage.
Right.
And there is no contractor storage. In other words, a unit large enough for a contractor or subcontractor to store their materials and supplies. And so, that's what our market analysis was about. And there is a need for that.
Okay.
Did you want to make a clarification?
Did you just concur? Laura's question was, was there a marketing analysis on the self-storage use, not the commercial or wholesale kind of use?
Oh, okay. We realize that there are a lot of self-storage units in the city, and that's not our intent. Our intent is to have a place for contractors to store their supplies.
I guess what we're saying is that when we look at contractor storage, our storage units are possibly going to be taller, they're going to be larger, there's going to be more room to access into our storage units than a typical storage unit that you can't even hardly get a pickup truck backed up to it. So, our vision is to have more of a contractor need, is to have more of a contractor's need, which may be larger units than a typical 10 by 10 that's not tall enough.
And that fits with exactly the way I had read the application material as well, but that would exclude part three of the storage section for the conditional use permit.
Right. And the way that the request was written was that you were applying for all of Section V, which includes the possibility for self-storage, if that's how they choose to develop it. So, it includes all of V. V is wholesale trade and distribution establishments, commercial warehousing and storage, self-storage, and professional business and office storage. So, it was all of those uses, and they have the ability to choose depending on their need.
I understand. And I think three and four are those that are more like mini warehouses. We've seen a whole bunch of. And personally, if it were limited to subsections one and two, I don't have objection. It sounds like the applicants are saying exactly what they're picturing to do is what I'd understood from the staff report and was the objective.
Well, if what you say is in fact true, then we need to restrict the conditional use permits to just one and two.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if that's what the applicant had requested.
I don't believe that is what we requested, because, you know, I think you want to be, have a little bit of choice if times change. I mean, if times do change, we have another period like we had in '07 or '08, and we think we're going to have everything as contractors. If something changes, I certainly wouldn't want to say I can only rent to a wholesaler or doing a warehouse. I'm just trying to keep, we're just trying to keep some things open-minded here that, you know, really, we're just trying to make, try to figure out how to make that happen.
And I would suggest if this is something to keep open as a possibility, it doesn't fit the demonstrated direct need for that use of that location that's required in the ordinance.
You said in your drawing here, future storage.
Correct.
Is that like a phase-two?
That would be, that would be a phase-two, yes.
In phase-two, would he have to come with plans? Because that's a new building, and that will have to be approved at another time.
Yes, he would be...
Not approving any construction or any kind of facility.
Right, that would be the final site plan. That was one of the conditions, complete with landscape.
So, would be another chance it would come back?
Well, no, but the conditional use, but the conditional use permit would already authorize the use.
It wouldn't come back before this commission.
It would be come back before you...
Staff.
And that's fine.
Yes. And there is a, there's a final plat that would come before you.
Yeah, the final plat would come back.
But that's not dealing with use.
The plat doesn't deal with, exactly, Laura's point, doesn't deal with use.
One question that I have is, you're talking about change of economic times, and maybe in the future, you might actually have to put regular storage units. Is there any way, the question that I have is, is that a possibility that since this is going to commercial, that suddenly they would be allowed to utilize RV outside storage? No?
No.
Any other questions?
I've got a series of them. We've got a couple of staff recommendations, and since we have the owner present. I'd like clarification on items one, part A, D, and E. What improvements to the exterior building are you proposing?
Well, currently, what we're trying to do is at least do some painting, obviously some painting to the buildings. Once we go into phase-two with the future building, what we'd like to do is be able to match up the future building or our existing buildings with the future building. We work with a company called Tractee. I don't know if you're familiar with them. What Tractee will do is they will come in and they will try and match up a new building and your old building by possibly either going over the exterior with new siding or reroute or something like that. That's what we envision doing. Right now, we're just talking about doing some basic painting and some landscape work to at least make it look much better than it is.
So, the second says examples are paint at a minimum, but brick, sandstone, wood, stucco, colored and textured concrete facing materials is not being offered by you at this point. Is that correct?
That's correct, because we haven't gotten to that point of our architectural design yet.
So, are we anticipating those type finishes on the new building?
Yes.
Okay. And then, item D under number one is to reduce the expanse of blank walls visible to the public with interesting details. What kind of interesting details are you proposing?
You know, those are examples. I think if we're trying to do some stuff like that, it may be something as simple as putting shutters on the outside, trying to make it more dimensional.
Are you proposing shutters?
We are.
I'm looking for specifics that we can basically have you commit to.
Exactly.
And I think right now...
Is this a point in the process to commit to that kind of stuff?
If you want to be specific in the conditions, you may ask for specific items.
We don't have another opportunity. Once the conditional use and zoning is approved, it's out of our hands. And so, I'd like to know what we're approving before we approve it.
Okay. Staff was okay to give them flexibility, knowing that they are making improvements and letting them choose the improvements, knowing that they would have to submit, comply with the guidelines anyway with our design standards. So, staff would be looking at a site plan showing where they're going to put their landscaping right now. Like, they're going to plant some street trees, and I've asked them to give me an idea of where you're going to put these street trees and how many you're going to plant. But right now, with this application, staff was confident that they will do some improvements that will reduce the expanse of blank walls, whether it's shutters, whether it's planting some trees along that wall, you know, however they're going to do it. We're fine with keeping the flexibility open. But this commission can make it more restrictive.
Coming up to item E, which is the screening. How are we going to screen the property and where are we going to put the fencing walls, whatever material? And I'm not, is that green line going to be? And I'm not, is that green line going to be the screening purposes? Is it the white line?
I believe what we're required to do is screen our outside storage area.
That's what E relates to, is the outside storage area, which is between Buildings 1 and 3 and that white line that extends from Building 1 and Building 3 to the east. So that will be a screened opaque solid fence of some sort, buffering of some sort.
What's the height that we're anticipating on that?
Again, they can go to the height that our fencing permits allow, which is six feet, maybe even a little higher for commercial. And we allow for variances to go a little higher. So we're not limiting them to a height.
We have a dump truck parked out there, construction like that, which might be 14 foot tall. A six-foot fence is what's being proposed. May not screen it adequately.
It may not, and there's no way you're going to screen totally outside storage.
And so.
Except Commissioner Hartsfield, they are looking to park a lot of these trucks between the buildings themselves, which act as screening right there.
And so the area along the north property line is not proposed for outdoor storage?
No, that's their future storage building. And there'll be access and aisles for the vehicles to get in and out around, immediately around it. Those arrows will be paths, roads.
Those aren't directional arrows, are they?
You know, they are looking at a one-way circular counterclockwise, and this is conceptual. So.
Why are we approving that?
You are approving a site plan. The future building will come in with a full site plan that would be administratively approved, that will show the roads going around, like they show the internal roadway. It is a directional arrow. They are showing it to be one-way, and conceptually, staff is okay with that. And they can come up with a different design, and it would still work.
Based on what's being presented tonight, and those arrows are directional, all traffic would be directed to the north end of the property along the residential buildings.
Correct.
Okay. And I believe in the presentation, there was some comment about improving Bowman for heavier truck traffic?
No, I believe that Bowman was already improved and C dot already.
Okay, my misunderstanding, and thank you. There are a couple other comments. I guess we'll address those, but thank you.
Okay. Anybody else at this point? We have to open up the public hearing now.
Is this area going to be paved?
I believe it will be paved. When we have to go and do, once we get our final drainage plan done, we believe we'll have to make some corrections in there, remove some of the existing asphalt to make the drainage work. So part of what we're trying to get accomplished into phase two is going to have all of our drainage study done. And with that drainage, we know we're going to have to probably adjust some elevations in there where the existing asphalt is.
Do we have anybody signed up?
Chairman, you have one.
At this point, what we're going to do is open up, open up the air, time for public comment. We have four people signed up. They will go first, then anybody after that that they don't cover anything, you're more than welcome to talk. First one on the list, Mr. Brooksbury.
I'm on for.
You're the other one? Okay. Inside two. Second one is Bill.
Same thing, I was on right.
Two, okay. Mr. Bill Teed, former judge of this area, retired attorney.
What does that mean?
An avid kayak. Correct?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Bill Teed. I live at the very end of Bowman Avenue and have for 40-plus years. And I'm here tonight solely on behalf of myself, and I've got some concerns that I don't believe have been addressed so far tonight. And if I may, before I get started, I want to say that I hope the applicants understand there's nothing at all personal, no animosity personally at all, and I'd be the first to admit that your family has been a pillar of the community for generations. And I have no doubt that you're going to do everything you say you're going to do. However, once a, my understanding is that once a property is rezoned, then that zoning applies not just to the applicants tonight, but to anybody whom they might sell to. And the later owners of the property, none of us are immortal, the later owners of the property might not be pillars of the community. So we have to make sure that this proposal makes sense. And I think it makes sense if you only look at the commercial businesses along Highway 67 and the immediate properties that surround this property. But you know what? Bowman Avenue serves as an entryway for the, for lots of subdivisions. And the map that was put on the screen doesn't even show my house. You're talking about far enough west. I would guess there are hundreds of lots that are zoned residential that use Bowman Avenue as an access point. Now, I ask you, is putting a heavy equipment storage area.
Would you go to zoning now?
Appropriate for resident, single-family residential traffic? And you know what? Tonight, I came to the conclusion, no, it isn't, because I was coming to the meeting. And here comes a great big rig. And it looked to me, I don't know heavy equipment, okay, but it looked similar in design to the kind of rigs you see coming down the Highway 24 from Triple Creek from the mining operations. And he was driving slowly, and he was driving as carefully as he could, but I had to slow way down and pull over on the shoulder in order to give him enough clearance to get by so that he could make the turn into your property. So, you know, it just seems like we're, it's a great idea, your proposal's a great idea, but it's in the wrong place. It ought to be at a location that's way out somewhere at the edge of town or in the county where we don't have established residential neighborhoods. And that was the situation when this facility was built. You know, believe it or not, Woodland Park in the '60s was a very, very small town, and for all practical purposes, the developed areas only extended about as far as we're talking about now. So it was appropriate at the time to have heavy equipment on that property. And the owner of the property at the time was not subject to the local zoning regulations the way private, all of us mere citizens are. It was the state of Colorado. And I think a lot of the reason it's there is because the city at that time really didn't have much choice in the matter. So, you know, when I heard that the state was going to build another facility at another location out in the country, and that we're dealing with a property that, I believe I'm correct from what I heard tonight, has never been zoned anything other than single-family residential. It never got commercial zoning. Sally, am I right about that?
I'm going to check the 1969 zoning map.
I don't know that for a fact.
The first half of this block was Zone C1, and then the second half of this block was zoned R1 in the very beginning. I don't know how it evolved over time. It was prior to 1997. It was recent, but was it commercial? We can go grab the map.
What, versus the other half, the east half and west half?
Yes.
What it is now?
No, shows.
Clarify.
Right, right.
So where the Bristol Cone campground is in 1969, that was C1.
And then the other half of the block was R1. But I did ask my predecessors, why did you zone this in 1997 residential, single-family residential? And their comment was, we wanted, we knew that it was going to transition at some point, and that they wanted to start with the most least impactful, not the most, but the least impactful zone, so that whatever went in there would have the opportunity to have a public review.
Okay. And is there any question that the master plan calls for single-family residential?
And the reason the master plan map shows single-family residential is because the underlying zone at the time was single-family residential. A better choice would have been the mixed use, the pink, knowing that it was currently being used for commercial.
Keep in mind that comprehensive plan is just a guide that reflects the zoning, really.
So where's your house? Can you point it out on that map?
Oh, yeah.
On the board?
The very end. I couldn't show.
Because that one's larger than the photograph.
Okay, how do I do that?
It's at the very end, Laura. It's the flag lot at the very end. There are two.
I don't know how to do that.
There are two, there are two flag lots at the end of Bowman.
Okay. Could you help me with the pointer? This is the cul-de-sac.
Yep.
And then my house goes just to the west of the cul-de-sac. Then you have large subdivisions in this area that aren't shown. The old K O A campground subdivisions are also not shown. So the point is, the concern I'm expressing is that Bowman Avenue is not just access to commercial property. It's access to hundreds, I believe, of residential lots. And it's your typical two-lane residential street. It's not very wide. And we're talking about putting the heaviest equipment on that street. And right now, the right across from the entrance of the property is a school bus pickup. Are those compatible uses?
The school district determines where they put their sites for school bus pickups, and those can change.
Okay. But I'm just saying, right now, that's what we're dealing with. So, you know, just, I always assumed, I mean, there were always problems when the state highly ran it, but I assumed that when they left the property, because every, the plan, the zoning was single-family residential, that, hey, a problem would go away. And the primary use on that side of town is residential. It's real hard in my mind to say that heavy equipment and single-family residential and kids and people walking their dogs down the street and taking their kids for a walk is compatible with the kind of truck traffic that I saw tonight and has been talked about. So the only way to, to, I guess, I guess what I'm requesting specifically is that because the master plan talks about this area should be residential, that you deny the request.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify that the community commercial zone allows for three-plus attached units. You could build apartments on this site. It could be developed under the CC Zone District for apartments similar to what's existing.
Okay, now, I don't understand. It's, I thought it was zoned residential right now.
It is zoned residential. It's zoned suburban residential, but the community commercial zone district allows for multifamily, higher-density residential developments as well. It's the mixed use that is indicated in the comprehensive plan that would have been a more appropriate guide for the development of this site. So by rezoning it to community commercial, you don't lose the residential potential. You still have that there. And like you said, another person could own the land in 50 years, and they could develop it as apartments or any.
That's right. But if you're not going to follow the plan, then the next applicant up here who doesn't conform to the plan is going to reasonably ask the question, gee, what good's the plan? You know, what importance does it have? So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sue Roberts, I'm sure that you're on this one because you live on Bowman. So come on.
I want to make a comment about it being typical.
Identify yourself.
I'm Sue Roberts, and I live at 1230 Bowman, and Bill's my neighbor. I guess my concern is very similar to Bill's, that I was kind of in shock that the zoning would change to commercial. And I'm one of those neighbors that walks those streets. I watch the children get off the bus. There's 20-some kids that get off the bus. There's people with their dogs, babies in carriages. And the road is being changed in that intersection. It's getting worse with potholes and things. And I'm feeling that, I would like you guys to consider that this might not be an appropriate place for commercial zoning. I appreciate your time, and I thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the audience want to talk about this? If not, we'll close the public hearing.
Comment.
Public comment. And at this point, we can have rebuttal from the applicant. Any comments you'd like to make concerning what you've heard here tonight? Anybody?
We asked for positive reassess for a re-trap, more or less, how would you do this?
You betcha.
I appreciate that.
Okay, it's almost a quarter after. We'll resume at 20 after. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you ask for a positive reassess for a re-trap? Will this help with this?
You betcha. Okay, it's almost quarter after. We'll resume at 20 after. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to make a comment about it being typical.
Identify yourself.
I'm Sue Roberts, and I live at 1230 Bowman. And Bill's my neighbor. I guess my concern is very similar to Bill's, that I'm, I was kind of in shock that the zoning would change to commercial. And I'm one of those neighbors that walks those streets. I watch the children get off the bus. There's 20-some kids that get off the bus. There's people with their dogs, babies in carriages. And the road is being changed in that intersection. It's getting worse with potholes and things. And I'm feeling that, I would like you guys to consider that this might not be an appropriate place for commercial zoning. I appreciate your time, and I thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the audience want to talk about this? If not, we'll close the public hearing.
Comment.
Public comment. And at this point, we can have rebuttal from the applicant. Any comments you'd like to make concerning what you've heard here tonight? Anybody?
We asked for a positive reassess for a re-trap. Will this help with this?
You betcha. Okay, it's almost quarter after. We'll resume at 20 after. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you ask for a positive reassess for a re-trap? Will this help with this?
You betcha. Okay, it's almost quarter after. We'll resume at 20 after. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to make a comment about it being typical.
Identify yourself.
I'm Sue Roberts, and I live at 1230 Bowman. And Bill's my neighbor. I guess my concern is very similar to Bill's, that I'm, I was kind of in shock that the zoning would change to commercial. And I'm one of those neighbors that walks those streets. I watch the children get off the bus. There's 20-some kids that get off the bus. There's people with their dogs, babies in carriages. And the road is being changed in that intersection. It's getting worse with potholes and things. And I'm feeling that, I would like you guys to consider that this might not be an appropriate place for commercial zoning. I appreciate your time, and I thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the audience want to talk about this? If not, we'll close the public hearing.
Comment.
Public comment. And at this point, we can have rebuttal from the applicant. Any comments you'd like to make concerning what you've heard here tonight? Anybody?
We asked for a positive reassess for a re-trap. Will this help with this?
You betcha. Okay, it's almost quarter after. We'll resume at 20 after. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to make a comment about it being typical.
Identify yourself.
I'm Sue Roberts, and I live at 1230 Bowman. And Bill's my neighbor. I guess my concern is very similar to Bill's, that I'm, I was kind of in shock that the zoning would change to commercial. And I'm one of those neighbors that walks those streets. I watch the children get off the bus. There's 20-some kids that get off the bus. There's people with their dogs, babies in carriages. And the road is being changed in that intersection. It's getting worse with potholes and things. And I'm feeling that, I would like you guys to consider that this might not be an appropriate place for commercial zoning. I appreciate your time, and I thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the audience want to talk about this? If not, we'll close the public hearing. A public comment. And at this point, we can have rebuttal from the applicant. Any comments you'd like to make concerning what you've heard here tonight? Anybody?
We asked for a positive reassess for a re-trap. Will this help with this?
You betcha.
Okay, it's almost quarter after. We'll resume at 20 after. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to make a comment about it being typical.
Identify yourself.
I'm Sue Roberts, and I live at 1230 Bowman. And Bill's my neighbor. I guess my concern is very similar to Bill's, that I'm, I was kind of in shock that the zoning would change to commercial. And I'm one of those neighbors that walks those streets. I watch the children get off the bus. There's 20-some kids that get off the bus. There's people with their dogs, babies in carriages. And the road is being changed in that intersection. It's getting worse with potholes and things. And I'm feeling that, I would like you guys to consider that this might not be an appropriate place for commercial zoning. I appreciate your time, and I thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the audience want to talk about this? If not, we'll close the public hearing. A public comment. And at this point, we can have rebuttal from the applicant. Any comments you'd like to make concerning what you've heard here tonight? Anybody?
We asked for a positive reassess for a re-trap. Will this help with this?
You betcha. Okay. It's almost quarter after. We'll resume at 20 after. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to make a comment about it being typical.
Identify yourself.
I'm Sue Roberts, and I live at 1230 Bowman. And Bill's my neighbor. I guess my concern is very similar to Bill's, that I'm, I was kind of in shock that the zoning would change to commercial. And I'm one of those neighbors that walks those streets. I watch the children get off the bus. There's 20-some kids that get off the bus. There's people with their dogs, babies in carriages. And the road is being changed in that intersection. It's getting worse with potholes and things. And I'm feeling that, I would like you guys to consider that this might not be an appropriate place for commercial zoning. I appreciate your time, and I thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the audience want to talk about this? If not, we'll close the public hearing. A public comment. And at this point, we can have rebuttal from the applicant. Any comments you'd like to make concerning what you've heard here tonight? Anybody?
We asked for a positive reassess for a re-trap. Will this help with this?
You betcha. Okay. It's almost quarter after. We'll resume at 20 after. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to make a comment about it being typical.
Identify yourself.
I'm Sue Roberts, and I live at 1230 Bowman. And Bill's my neighbor. I guess my concern is very similar to Bill's, that I'm, I was kind of in shock that the zoning would change to commercial. And I'm one of those neighbors that walks those streets. I watch the children get off the bus. There's 20-some kids that get off the bus. There's people with their dogs, babies in carriages. And the road is being changed in that intersection. It's getting worse with potholes and things. And I'm feeling that, I would like you guys to consider that this might not be an appropriate place for commercial zoning. I appreciate your time, and I thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the audience want to talk about this? If not, we'll close the public hearing. A public comment. And at this point, we can have rebuttal from the applicant. Any comments you'd like to make concerning what you've heard here tonight? Anybody?
We asked for a positive reassess for a re-trap. Will this help with this?
You betcha. Okay.
Right. 20-30 feet from Bowman.
Did you get a name? But they weren't going in there.
Were they going in that location? Is that where they were turning?
They were just going up the street.
Or going by?
I don't know. But look, I mean, the state didn't use smaller equipment either, you know? I mean, when the state ran it, it was a problem. I thought the problem blew away because it's home residential, et cetera, but it's not going away, you know? We're wanting, they're wanting to do the same exactly, the state did. Now, the state was not a commercial operation. It was a, so I'm wondering, where does the right to run business out of there come from?
Well, you know, the state ran six or seven tandems out of there consistently. We have one truck. And I understand you don't know what's to come in the future, but I can tell you that the truck that you saw probably comes from whispering winds, that he's been driving by there for 10, 15 years. I mean, I know whose truck it was, but anyway. The fact is, is that the person was going slow. He was being respective to what was happening. That's how we would be. But, you know, I understand, I understand your concern. And that's what we would hope that we would do, is understand anybody's concern.
And I appreciate, you're going to do what you can to mitigate this problem, but I'm not, there's no guarantee that the next owner of the property will have the same view.
That's true.
Any place, anything that's sold out there, the same thing applies. Somebody sells a million-dollar house, and we've got a growth facility, that's already happened in our area. I mean, you can't prevent who you sell the house to, that they're going to be the same kind of a good neighbor you are. And that's, that's the dilemma, too. Okay. Any other questions from us folks up here?
If I may add a piece of information, I attended the neighborhood meeting. The folks that were at the neighborhood meeting, we had a lady who lived in the north here. We had a couple of ladies who live in the apartments. And we had a gentleman who lives on Bowman here, and then the neighbor who is directly to the south. The folks directly to the south said, we love this neighbor. We watch their property. We appreciate it being occupied. We were concerned about it being vacant. And that's why they're not here tonight. You are not having the immediate neighbors speak. Instead, you have the neighbors that are at the end of Bowman, of which most of these homes were all built after 1965, when CDOT was operating. I would also submit that it's very typical for commercial uses to be one block off the highway. You can see it with the campground north of here. You can see it with Tractor Supply. And this future lot is a block off the highway. So it's not atypical to have a business one block within that.
I'm sorry?
Was that on Bowman?
Yes, ma'am. Right, right. Twenty, thirty feet from the entrance.
Did you get a name?
But they weren't going in there.
Were they going in that location? Is that where they were turning or going by?
I, I, I don't know. But, but look, I mean, the state didn't use small equipment either, you know? I mean, when the state ran it, it was a problem. I thought the problem blew away because it's non-residential, et cetera, but it's not blew away, you know? We're wanting, they're wanting to do the same exact thing. The state did. Now, the state was not a commercial operation. It was a, so I'm wondering, where does the right to run business out of there come from?
Well, you know, the, the state ran six or seven tandems out of there consistently. We have one truck. And I understand you don't know what's to come in the future, but I, I can tell you that the truck that you saw probably comes from whispering winds, that he's been driving by there for 10, 15 years. I mean, I know whose truck it was, but anyway. The fact is, is that the person was, was going slow. He was being respective to what was happening. That's how we would be. But, you know, I understand, I understand your concern. And that's what we would hope that we would do is understand anybody's concern.
And I appreciate you're going to do what you can to mitigate this problem, but I'm not, there's no guarantee that the next owner applies to the same duty.
That's true.
Anything that's sold out there, the same thing applies. Somebody sells a million-dollar house and we've got a growth facility, that's already happened in that area. I mean, you can't prevent who you sell the house to, that they're going to be the same kind of a good neighbor you are. And that's, that's the dilemma too. Okay. Any other questions from, from us folks up here?
If I may add a piece of information, I attended the neighborhood meeting. The folks that were at the neighborhood meeting, we had a lady who lived in the north here. We had a couple of ladies who live in the apartments. And we had a gentleman who lives on Bowman here. And then the neighbor who is directly to the south. The folks directly to the south said, we love this neighbor, we watch their property, we appreciate it being occupied, we were concerned about it being vacant, and that's why they're not here tonight. You are not having the immediate neighbors speak. Instead, you have the neighbors that are the end of Bowman, of which most of these homes were all built after 1965, when C-Dot was operating. I would also submit that it's very typical for commercial uses to be one block off the highway. You can see it with the campground north of here. You can see it with Tractor Supply. And this future lot is a block off the highway. So it's not atypical to have a business one block within that first block off the highway.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. At this point, we can deliberate among ourselves with questions and that, that you can address anybody with that you'd like to.
Couple points I didn't get to, I thought I'd got a lot of it. Regarding the amendments, the applicant's proposed to item two, daylight operations or DAF operations. Exception to unforeseen, because we know it's going to snow, we know there's going to be early morning traffic for snowplows. And occasional, how is occasional defined? Once a month, twice a week, five days a week? So the terms that are implied, I understand their request, because if they have snowplow equipment on site, having to get that out, and there may be late deliveries, but the terms that are used, I guess it's just a comment that I don't think they're appropriate, the terms. The other thing is lighting. We have hours of operation. Are we going to, or I guess, what hours are these lights going to be lit? I was going to propose we keep them to the hours of operation, but it's sunup, sundown. We won't need lights. So maybe that's a question of the applicant, is, are these 24-hour lights, security lights?
More of a security issue.
The security lights that the president of the building has in there for the whole time is what?
We're not talking about C-Dot, we're talking about your operation.
They come on at dusk.
And you would propose to maintain that same schedule?
Correct.
Thank you.
I believe that Laura made a, one of the, I might want to cover that as far as full cutoff.
One of the conditions is full cutoff, downcast, shielded, warm, no higher than 25 feet. And as you heard the applicant, they're not proposing to change the existing lighting, although there may be some security lighting added to the new building when that comes in, which we will review with the site line.
They will have to change out the lights that are mercury vapor going up into the sky with full cutoff light. That's what I was told by her this morning.
I don't believe they have any pole lights. I think all the building light, all the lights are on the buildings, aren't they? While packs?
There's one pole light that doesn't funk, doesn't work. There is one there, but it's not on, it doesn't operate.
And you're not planning to put a bulb in?
We have no reason to operate it.
So they're all going to be building-mounted lights?
Full cutoff. Next question. You have any more, Ken?
No questions.
Anybody else have any more questions? Okay, at this point, we would encourage a motion in a second.
I didn't deliberate.
Is there a discussion about restricting traffic? Is that something you want to consider as a restriction on the conditions?
Restricting traffic out?
Well, it was what was discussed, I'd like to, if anyone wanted to apply that restriction or not.
What was it, restriction?
That we restrict heavy traffic to Bowman, keep it off pole light.
Define heavy. That's the problem.
Truck traffic.
That's what you were saying. You don't go to the intersection or the main intersection.
You have access on pole light, you're probably right in line.
Correct, but, yeah, you're right.
I mean, would that be something that would, any commercial vehicle has to enter through the Bowman?
You have made the statements that you're going to be open, talk to the neighbors, open door, come in and speak with you, and doing that, if there is a problem, then you would help address that. I don't know how much more than that that we would ask anybody to be able to do. Because, okay, now the guy that comes to fix your refrigerator can't come in because he's got a commercial maintenance pickup truck. I mean, you get to the point that it gets really, really difficult to try to figure out how you're going to do that. And maybe you can make your hours check with the school system, that you're not going to do it when the kids are being dropped off or stuff like, you know, something to that effect. And that's just timing. And you'll know what time the school bus is going to come by in the morning, and they're going to drop the kids off in the afternoon. And you're going to have kids walking to the class. And you guys can, you guys can figure that out, control that to the best you can do. I don't, you've been around here a long time, I don't believe you, you know, they're not like somebody coming in with a new magnetic sign on your truck, they're going to open up that. You've been around here a long time.
How do we restrict the use on pole light street?
Pardon?
How can we restrict the use on pole light street?
Good question.
We all, as a property, we could restrict the access.
You have a right to put that condition in if that's what you, that's what the commission decides to do.
Well, if that's the discussion I wanted to have, I don't know if we're going to make a proposal to, we got recommendations on.
I'm still looking for a motion in a second.
Okay, I move that we approve zone change based on the findings contained in the Stafford Court and presented this evening in public hearing from suburban residential to community commercial on 2.238 acres in the northwest one quarter of the northwest one quarter of section 24, T12S, R69W of the Sixth Principal, I have trouble with that too, Meridian, 930 West Bowman Avenue, with conditions as presented in the Stafford Court, except for condition number two, hours of operation that we consider taking the applicant's recommendation.
Can I just clarify, you included in that the, all the, the conditional use, not just the other? Do we, did we have any amendments that we wanted to add during our discussion, maybe we wrote down?
I was very supportive of the amendment, I mean, I suggested limiting, limiting the conditional use to 1809, 90V1 and V2, limiting essentially the-
Self-storage?
It's limited to the, to the commercial, commercial storage in the top, wholesale, trade, distribution establishment and commercial warehousing and storage, and not to exclude a particular self-storage. Yeah, I think self-storage is kind of a flag word around here anymore. It probably shouldn't have been used in the application.
Well, let me, let me clarify, self-storage means personal items. So that is even a lesser impact than commercial storage.
So you're adding more-
Since you're going to rebuttal, I was basing mine on the language, the language in your, said is for a demonstrated need for particular use at a particular location. That is sensible and appropriate there, isn't it?
Who's done the survey for the demonstrating the need?
And apparently no one has.
Nor have you.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so there's no support for that, again, there's no way in the second for approving.
I second Mr. Watson's motion.
Oh.
Thank you. I will call for the question.
Is it both issues, the CUP and zoning change?
Excuse me?
This is both issues approved, recommend approval of both the CUP and zoning change.
Yes, that's what I heard. All right, so the application is to approve the rezoning from single-family residential to community commercial and to approve the conditionally used permit with all the conditions with changes to number two for the additional time that the, as per the applicant's wording. And did I hear that there was a limit on V1 and V2 for the use?
No.
No?
No.
Sorry about that. All right, so beginning with Jeff Watson.
Yes.
Lee Brown.
No.
Ellen Carrick.
Yes.
Vicki Good.
No.
Ken Hartsfield.
No.
Charles Schrader.
Yes.
John DeVoe.
Yes.
Motion passes. 4-3. Motion passes, 4-3. So this, this case will move forward to the city council agenda for a public hearing on August 1st.
Understand you have the ability before you leave, Mr. T., before you leave, you have the opportunity to go to the city council and express your same concerns, because they're the ones, we're simply doing a recommendation. They have to approve it. So if you want to voice your opinion, please go to that, make note of that, and go on to that to talk about it.
And this is planned for city council public hearing on August 1st.
Okay, there you go. Thanks.
Well, we don't get, we don't, we don't get contingent 4-3 votes here.
We do not.
We're going to get out of here at midnight. Give a couple minutes for these folks to clear out, and we'll get this started. We'll move on to the second, second item we've got, and I'll read this, sub 19-006, Stone Ridge Village filing number four, final plat, a request by Dana Duncan, Stone Ridge Village LLC, property owner and skip house applicant and project coordinator to approve a major subdivision of 9.44 acres plotted, platted into 21 lots with easements and road rights of way in the Stone Ridge Village planned unit development situated south of Research Drive and north of Firestone Drive, located in the southwest one quarter of the southwest one quarter of section 12, and in the northwest one quarter of the northwest one quarter of section 13, all in T12S, range 69 west of the Sixth Prime Meridian and the city of Woodland Park, Teller County. And in this case, the staff is going to go first.
Yes, thank you. And if I can just remind you all to you, to take the mute off when you speak, we're having little audio difficulty capturing your, your voice. This is a major subdivision on 9.44 acres with 21 lots. And the lots range in size from a little over 11,000 square feet to a little over 20,000 square feet. There is three new roadways associated with this final plat, Roberts Ranch Road, Millstone Lane, Ridgestone Drive, and it is in the PUD district. And Mr. Dana Duncan is here this evening, property owner and skip house, the applicant As you can see by the site location map, it is located north on Highway 67, about a mile north on 67 from Highway 24, and just south of Research Drive. Here is an aerial that also shows you filing number three, which you saw two years ago and now has been nearly completely built out in those two years. And filing four is outlined in red. It abuts Research Drive, the Eagle Pines subdivision, the Davises' property up in the north, and then filing three. Here is the zoning map that shows the Stone Ridge PUD. Its primary entrance is off of Highway 67 and then connects by Stone Ridge Drive through Firestone, and then Ridgestone Drive will provide for a second access to Research. So this community now will connect and have two points of access to the first four filings in this development. This was the preliminary plat, and I know it's a little fuzzy, it was back in 2004, that this preliminary plat was approved. And the filing four, I'll zoom in a little bit further, has Ridgestone Drive that connects up to Research. Roberts Ranch was a little bit of a curvature to this northern section. Millstone was going to be in more of a T, but we, after looking at the lot layout, it made more sense to make this more into an L. So I'll point that out on the final plat. Here is the final plat, so there was a little bit of a minor change to make Roberts Ranch Road a more direct straight road with a cul-de-sac at the end. The Davises, who owned the original Roberts Ranch, now still do live to the northwest of this property. One of the conditions is to ensure that there is an adequate easement for access to their property. And then you see Ridgestone Drive that connects with Research. Ridgestone is a 50-foot road right-of-way and actually larger as it gets down or as it goes north. There will be an island, a landscape island in this area that will have some signage. You'll see a condition that deals with the landscape island, that we add a note to this plat so that it is clear as to who is responsible for the maintenance, and that would be the homeowners association for the signage and the landscaping. The city would be responsible for the curb and gutter. Then Millstone Lane, you can see that that is now in an L shape that allowed for these lots that are in the southern end to have a couple of, a flag lot and a little bit more property, less infrastructure for the city to maintain and manage. The south end of Ridgestone Drive ties into filing three, where the existing road improvements were completed and accepted a year ago. So here are some photos that I took about two weeks ago, and Mr. House can update you on where they are with the curb, gutter, sidewalks and asphalt. But right now, all the infrastructure underground is in for water and sewer, and they are working on compacting and getting to final grade for the road. This is looking north on Stone Ridge Drive, and you can see the rufton bench. There will be an eight-foot wide sidewalk on Stone Ridge Drive. This is intended to go all the way south to Meadowwood Park at some point, so it provides for pedestrian and bicycle access as well on this eight-foot size sidewalk. This is also Stone Ridge Drive at Research, looking south. And then you can see Roberts Ranch Road looking west from Research Drive. Here is, up in the top photo is the intersection of Ridgestone Drive and Millstone Lane. This is the little dogleg L cul-de-sac. And then here is Ridgestone Drive where it connects to the existing new portion of filing three. When we reviewed this and the staff report details the staff's review of the criteria with respect to a final plat and the design standards, the information area is a technical, detailed, long list that talks to the survey drawing by a licensed surveyor, and all the criteria was reviewed. The only variance that will be needed is a 40-foot road right-of-way variance for Roberts Ranch and Millstone. These are the two small cul-de-sacs. The purpose is well-designed, 21-lot subdivision on the 9.4 acres with the new roads, utilities. And the drainage was previously installed as part of filings one and two. The drainage report has been reviewed by our city engineer, and this subdivision does release the stormwater into Loy Gulch below the detention pond. However, the detention pond has been oversized to accommodate for this stormwater. And site consideration is suitable for development with adequate services. There's fire protection, utility connections, drainage, erosion control- There's fire protection, utility connections, drainage, erosion control, and adequate drainage grading. The frontage meets the PUD standard that was established for this subdivision, so all lots have at least 25 feet of frontage. The easements, for the most part, are adequate. It was missing the 25-foot conservation area that is along the western border adjacent to Eagle Pines subdivision. And then also, there will be an adjustment to the Roberts Ranch driveway easement to the Davis's property. All lots are suitable for building, and the land use intensity ratio will be established as 25 to 20 percent for each lot. This all complies with the standards and the code. We have done appropriate referrals to all the utilities and internally to City Hall. Public notices were done in accordance to the code and complies. There are five conditions associated with the final plat. First is to amend the final plat with adding the conservation area and a note that specifies what can and cannot be used in that conservation area. It's basically to prevent sheds and other structures. It does, however, allow for fencing, but it is a four-foot-tall fence, open fence, not privacy fences. And this was done in order to allow for wildlife to be able to traverse through this area. We'll be modifying the private egress and ingress to the Davis's, asking to remove Pinnacle Design Works as the designer, that company is no longer in business. They were, however, the original group that worked on the PUD, had the landscaping and signage island near the intersection of Research and add a note about the maintenance. This property is subject to a water development fee, and that will be collected prior to recording the plat. Also, prior or within 60 days of recording the plat, there's a requirement for a title insurance policy for that property that is dedicated to the city. So almost two acres is roadway that will be dedicated to the city. The final CCNRs, the covenants, conditions, and restrictions, will be provided to the city and recorded at the same time as the plat. And then the developer shall enter into a subdivision development agreement for any outstanding improvements. Primarily, it will be seeding by the time it comes to, prior to recording the plat. So the subdivision development agreement will be secured with an appropriate instrument, letter of credit, escrow agreement, cash, at 150 percent of those outstanding improvements. And lastly, with this plat, we will be asking for City Council to agree to the variance of a 40-foot road right-of-way. And we had discussed this with the Haven subdivision. The purpose is to limit the amount of trees that are taken out because now IREA and the utility companies are insistent of using the 10-foot-wide utility easement. So 40 feet plus 20 is a 60-foot swath of tree removal, as opposed to a 70-foot tree removal swath if it were 50 feet for the road right-of-way. So with that, I will ask for the owner and applicant to provide their review of their
Good evening, Skip Howes, project manager for Stone Ridge Village. Give you a little history of where we are. We're fine grading right now for curb and gutter. Our plan is we've got our subcontractor coming in next week to string and start putting curb down. We'll be getting that in place. Obviously, we've got to work around the holidays, so we'll be doing next week and the following week with curb. And we've got a lot of cure for a few days to harden up. We'll be sloping behind the curb, and we've got Martin Marietta coming in the 15th to start grading the road for two lifts of three inches of asphalt to a total depth of six. We're going to be real tight with as far as getting that done by City Council, but our plan basically is to ask Council to just kind of approve it, but hold off on recording of the plat until we've got our asphalt in and then go from there. Sally mentioned the comment about IREA. It was interesting, we had some very in-depth meetings with IREA and Black Hills, and their answer was, "We don't want to be in the city road right-of-way." And they're having issues, I guess, in Castle Rock and others where the cities are requiring roads to be widened or relocated, and they come to the utilities and say, "At your expense, you need to move your utilities." So they basically said, "No, we're not going in the road right-of-way." So working with them and staff, we came up with this alternative for the side streets to cut down the amount of trees we've got to cut from anywhere from a 60-foot road right-of-way normally, 10 and 10 would be 80 feet. Ours in Stone Ridge, they're 50-foot mains and now 40 feet on the secondary. So we're trying to save as many trees as possible. We've had some redesign efforts that we've had to do during the last year. We worked with Kip in the utilities department because he came to us after the design was approved, and he said, "I don't have a maintenance truck that'll do this sewer design." So we had to relocate the sewers so that the city facilities could be handled during the process. Black Hills Energy also has a six-inch main gas line that runs down Research. And when we said, "Hey, that's going right down the front, right through a couple of lots that people are going to want to build on, can we move it?" And in their inevitable way and their willingness to cooperate, they said, "No." So we had to redesign and move Roberts Ranch, so that's why it's straight. And then we worked with Dean Waters, who's building a house in Eagle Pines and the Davis family to meet the requirements that we have with the original easement agreement. So we'll get that hopefully squared away here in the next week or so. Subject to what we get guidance from you all, we'll go ahead and make the modifications to the plat. And after Council approves, we'll get those all done, give them to the staff, let staff run it up the flagpole, see if there's anything we missed. And then if we make some changes, we'll go back and make them and then produce the mylar for recording. Probably it'll happen within a week to 10 days after Council property goes. So our intention is to, the only thing we need to guarantee for would be the revegetation. We are going to go ahead and put the eight-foot sidewalk in at the time of paving and curb because it's on the east side of the road where there's basically no housing going on, so we don't have to worry about builders beating them up and doing damage to them. So the thought process was we'll get them in place so that people can use them while things are going on. We had to do an update on the drainage analysis based on the new city code in 2014. Is that the date? So JPS Engineering completed that, it was reviewed and agreed to and signed off by the city engineer, so there we are. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have on any particular thing, so.
Staff applicant?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When I was on council, been a few years.
Begin to your mic, please.
I'm sorry. When I was on council a few years ago, we went out where that gas connecting unit is at some Roberts Ranch Drive, I believe.
Yes, it's the very west end.
And you're going right past that.
No, we're going south of it.
Okay, when that took place, they showed us how they tested it with the turbine engine on it so that it would, so that they could push the gas all the way up to cripple it. Is that still there?
No.
Okay, because if it is, you're going to have to put a runway back.
No, that was a temporary situation from what I recall that they used until they got the facility in place. Well, what the heck, it's a matter of public record. The equipment that they have is within their easement, but the fence is not. So I get a chance to negotiate with Black Hills Energy on how they might want to acquire an increase of their easement to include their fence, which might be, maybe instead of the chain link fence, they might put a cedar fence around it so we wouldn't have to look at it.
Just a story comment, back when you guys applied for Stone Ridge, I think Mr. Duncan was involved with that. I recall, that was a pretty big project a few years ago. We've had a recession in between and all kinds of stuff. But I remember it was going to connect to Meadowwood, and it looks like it's starting to get there.
Well, yeah, it's going to be a while, I think.
I know, but it's just, when you drive back off the entrance, it just keeps going. So back up against Northwoods and all that area there. And it seems like the farther back you get, the lots get bigger.
They do.
They do. And it's just, it's really turned into a really nice project. I'm just.
The lots are sized based on topography.
Okay, and it's really, really doing well back there. I've driven that a couple times, and that's really turned out good.
Yeah, the only thing you've got to do right now is dodge a deer.
Okay. I didn't want to drive back there and check because I was going to get stuck in the other part of the car. But, okay, any comments at all? If not, we'll open up the public hearing. Okay?
He's got the board.
I'm Brooke Smith. I live at 1324 Long's Point. I've passed out some flood maps that have indicated where my house is. It's on the townhouses that back up to Loy Gulch and the golf course, just north of this property, just off of Research. I kind of purpled in the main streets there so you can kind of get oriented. It's a little hard to pick up on here, but you can see the FEMA floodplain on there, and you can see that this property is discharging water into Loy Gulch, drainage water into Loy Gulch, which comes right down, goes under Long's Point and comes right behind our houses. Right now, none of the properties on Long's Point, with the exception of the very southern unit, are affected at all by the floodplains. And obviously, we want to make sure that that stays that way. In order to review the work that was being done, I went into the city back in November of 2018, and I could see construction work going on, storm sewers going in, and I wanted to see the engineering work that had been done to size those and how it was being done because a portion of this property discharges directly into Loy Gulch, is not detained. And I think Sally mentioned that the detention pond that's east of here, just west of Highway 67, has been oversized to accommodate the water that is being discharged directly into Loy Gulch. I was very concerned about that, and I wanted to make sure that the simultaneous discharge of water from the large pond, detention pond, plus the water that's going undetained, is accounted for and is not going to make the floodplains larger. What ended up happening was a little bit of a problem. I asked for, to look at this material back in November. Sally and the city engineering people told me that the drainage report was being revised based on a change in city criteria, was not available yet. I continued to question the city during the first part of this year. And finally, on June the 10th, that's 17 days ago, I received the revised drainage report from the city. I have been looking at it since, meeting with the city engineer, trying to go through questions, et cetera, that I have, and most everything has been answered. The city engineer's been wonderful because I know he's got 100 things on his desk. But meanwhile, the time has been getting closer and closer to this meeting. And I can tell you right now, I still have one concern that has not been resolved. I just got the comments into the city engineer this evening around 4 o'clock. I got his report around noon today. So things have been a little hectic just due to the schedules. I don't know what's the best thing to do. I was thinking of asking for a delay to give us time to look at this, but I'm not that skilled in what the planning requirements, et cetera, are. I would like to get the concerns addressed, but I do understand the developer and owners wanting to get this moving. It certainly is moving along and will be nice to have in when it's there. But I just still have a concern, and I think they can be answered, but I don't exactly know which way to deal with that. So that's my concern.
Thank you.
Can you elaborate on your concern, please?
I can. I don't want it to get too technical, but what I, the work that has been submitted by the engineer, by the developer's engineer and gone over with the city engineer, seems to be correct. I have no problem with that. What I'm concerned about is I went back to the LOMR, L-O-M-R, which is the letter of map revision that was done, I believe it was done in 2015. And that's how we finally got defined floodlines that you see on this map. And the LOMR was very difficult to get done, and I was much appreciative when we finally got it done. What I'm concerned about is the historical flows that were used by the contractor to FEMA that came up with these floodlines, their numbers are a little bit different from the historical flows, are a little bit different from the ones that were used here. And I didn't know if the city engineer or the developer's engineer had looked at those, compared those. And from what I can understand right now, it appears to me that the developer used higher historical flows than the LOMR did at this particular point, which is right where Level Gulch comes in. That's that big blue swath that comes across right just north of Research. And that is a concern to me because if the developer has higher historical flows, then that means their flows are going to increase the size of the floodplain. And that I don't want to see. Now, maybe everything can be explained, probably can. Had we had more time, I think we could have resolved it, but at this point, I'm still not convinced.
What did the city engineer say today?
He hadn't said anything because I just got my comments into him at 4 o'clock today.
Was it his original report at noon?
Yeah, his original report was some other questions that I had, and he took care of that. Everything was fine there, I have no problem with that. I'm just concerned that, I want to make sure that the developer's engineer and the city engineer have considered the LOMR report. I didn't get the feeling that that was a major part of his review, that he calculated his own historical flows rather than using the ones that were used by FEMA. And that's a bit of a question I have.
Sally, do you have any comments?
Yes, this is a very technical aspect, so I would say that the planning commission could approve this contingent upon the resolution being, or this issue being discussed with the engineers prior to City Council.
That's fine with me.
If that's.
If that can be done.
If the applicant is agreeable to that, rather than holding it up here. If the applicant is agreeable to that, rather than holding it up here.
Brooke, you're an engineer and I'm just an architect, so you're more technical than I am. Yeah, I mean, historical flows are based on drainage basins, and I know working with Bob Young over the last years to try to get this LOMR redone, took a whole lot of money and a whole long time. And, and I'm not technical, so I don't know what the historic flows coming off of this property were versus the historic flows coming down from Valley View and from Level Road and all of that, and how they come in together. So, you know, we rely on our engineers, and he's got technical questions, so I would say, you know, let the technical guys get together and figure it out. We had long conversations with John Swab, with JPS, you know, looking at what we release from the detention ponds is at or below historic. This is the only section filing four of Stone Ridge that will go into Level Gulch without detention, from, from basically Firestone to Research Drive is going directly in through stormwater inlets and mitigation from that standpoint. So they run their numbers, they crunch their things, stand on one foot, however they do it, and they come up with their requirements. So we submit it, and you know, if you want, if you want him to look at it and verify it, yes.
Sally, when's this go to council?
18.
July 18th. So in three, three weeks.
In between now and then, it's a.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Run the numbers, make sure everybody's happy, and get that thing done, and it's a know or go or no-go, based on what you come up with and verify the numbers.
Yeah, I think all we're looking for is.
Time is money, these guys trying to get it paved, all that stuff, they're fighting, fighting time on doing that. And we got a block there now, about two or three weeks, that we can utilize that to get that finished and still not stop the process.
Yeah, I don't know the drainage criteria, I know that the city drainage manual requires certain things. I don't know whether that requires them to look at upstream floods or downstream floods or not, not my area of expertise. We design and construct in accordance with the city drainage requirements, and they're submitted and reviewed, and if they're not approved, we go back and make some changes. So I'm guessing the city engineer will be answering Brooke's questions.
Sounds good. Bill, you're up.
Bill Kaziski, 1149 Windflower Drive. This is only the second meeting I've come to for you guys, and I, and I have a question about process. I saw the proposal and the packet that those guys put out for the pines at Tammerack, and I'm looking at what was in here for this one, which were those three plat maps, and I don't understand, is there a traffic study that's being done for this? They had 26 lots, they did a traffic study, they did pretty elaborate drainage studies, and this package is, is beriffed compared to that. I'm just trying to understand why that might be.
It's a good question, because the subdivision of land begins with a preliminary plat, and don't let the word preliminary throw you. That is the most important phase of subdividing property, although it is not recorded. It does not give you permission to convey property. What it does is give you the permission to begin developing the property, and in accordance with the preliminary plat. So in 2004, when Stone Ridge was approved for a preliminary plat, the traffic studies, the drainage studies, and all the utility plans, the preliminary utility plans, were done just like the pines at Tammerack that you saw two weeks ago. So that was done, oh, 15 years ago. And, and what happens after the preliminary plat is then a set of construction drawings for very detailed plan and profiles of the water and sewer lines, the drainage, the detention ponds, all the things, the infrastructure that is necessary to develop the property takes place just after the preliminary plat is approved. You can phase your preliminary plat, which is what, what is happening here. So as long as each phase is standalone and can function on its own, and then you begin to build houses. The final plat is more of an as-built that allows for the recording and then the conveyance of property to other owners. So hopefully that helps.
Given the fact that that was done in 2004, I'm guessing city population is four or five times larger than it was then, traffic definitely much heavier than was anticipated then, should these plans be updated when these developments actually get put in?
Well, we did update the drainage, and as far as traffic is concerned, those numbers get added and projected out. Those traffic studies do do a 20, 30-year projection, so it is taken into account. And I did speak about the CDOT moving forward with the traffic signal design at Kelly's Road in Stone Ridge, so that is hopefully going to get, start getting installed next year. Will take them a year to get the design completed. So a developer receives entitlements with the preliminary plat to move forward.
Okay. Just seems like the, the traffic here is gonna be on research. These houses, several of them are right on research, and the bulk of them, I don't see people driving over to Stone Ridge and utilizing the turn lanes and the nice traffic light that I guess you guys paid for, actually. And I'm a little concerned, 'cause we just approved 26 new lots out of Pines at Tammerack, which is, I don't know, a half mile upstream. We've got 21 new homes here, there's, there's talk about 50-plus in the, in the Little Home Project there, which is 100 feet or so upstream from, all that traffic's gonna be going towards the city. I understand you also have 19 patio homes that could potentially go right at this site and another 50 apartments? So I'm just looking at research, and that's the only way right now I have in and out to my house, and, and wondering if this extra traffic's gonna break it. There are times of day already when you can't make a left turn out of research. And we're gonna add, based on 26 new homes, that was 300 trips, I believe, so this is gonna be very similar, and 50 new homes, that's probably what, a thousand trips? Are we?
10, 10 trips per home is the standard for a single patio home.
Okay. One other question, it seems maybe appropriate that we're getting development ahead of our traffic infrastructure for the reasons that you stated last meeting, that these things take time and we're in competition. Who makes a determination on what the speed limit should be on Highway 67 through this stretch? 'Cause I honestly foresee bad accidents coming up as we force more and more people to take these existing roads and have projects that are, you know, as you said, 2045, that's, that's way down the road, even 2020 for that, that traffic signal. I'm just afraid these, all these little developments don't look bad, it taken individually, but when you start adding them all up, and the effect on 67, for example, is, I don't know where that's being done.
Can I brief him on 67?
Well, as we spoke at the Pines at Tammerack, CDOT is the owner of Highway 67. They would be responsible for setting the speed limit. They do that based on a speed study, and they have certain warrants and standards that apply to that speed study results to determine whether there is a need to lower speed limits or change priorities.
So I would guess the number of houses draining into that corridor would come into that somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things that happened, so you realize, we have what's called a water tap management plan to control our growth. Okay, and 1996, when I moved here, it was 5,700 people, and it's about 8,200 now. We've only gone up 2,500 people since 1996, so we have not increased four or five times. And our buildout was 12,700 for Woodland Park, and we're out of water. So we still got 50% of that less, but we're not four or five times. It may seem like that when you're trying to get out.
Well, my frame of reference here is since 2015, and, and that 2,500 probably all happened in that period, so, from my frame of reference, it is. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a question for staff. What would trigger a study by CDOT to change these?
There can be a request from the community, however, you do need to be a little bit careful about making that request, because it may have the alternate consequence.
But if it's based on how fast people go, it will have the alternate consequence.
It is.
That's what happened to the interstate going from Colorado Springs.
That's right.
It was 55, and they saw everybody going 70, so they raised it to 65, and I'm afraid that's what's gonna happen here.
That's right. They have an 85th percentile, so if a certain percentage of the traffic is, is traveling naturally above the speed limit, it may actually trigger an increase in speed.
One other question for staff. Why is there not a detention pond associated with this new section that we're discussing? Sort of what Mr. Smith asked also. I know there's a huge, huge detention pond on the other part of the property, why does this flow directly into the gulch?
There's actually three detention ponds skip upstream, or is it two? Two. Two detention ponds, so there, it was designed to have that detention occur within the natural channels of the flow, and so by overdetaining the stormwater in the two other ponds, it in effect took care of this area.
Anybody else have questions? If not, we'll close the public comment section, unless there's somebody out there that wants to speak. Okay? We'll close the comment section, and at this point, we get to talk among ourselves, or ask questions that you would like to bring up. If not, then we're going to the next phase, which is to seek a motion and a second.
I'll move that we make recommendation to council to approve SUB 19-006, Stone Ridge Village, filing number four, final plat, with the conditions stipulated by staff.
Do we have a second?
Wait, wait. And contingent upon the engineering getting together to.
I will amend that motion to.
Correct.
Thank you.
Address the engineering issues.
Do we have a second? Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we will begin with Lee Brown.
Yes.
Ellen Carrick.
Yes.
Vicky Good.
Yes.
Ken Hartsfield.
Yes.
Charles Schrader.
Yes.
John DeVoe.
Yes.
Jeff Watson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we're reports.
Yes.
And you would like to make some comments?
I would like to make one comment about your next meeting, the next meeting, excuse me, folks. Okay. Your next meeting is scheduled for July 11th. We had posted that meeting for a public hearing on a, an amendment to the chapter, I'm sorry, an amendment to Chapter 1831, which is the Woodland Station Overlay District. That meeting on July 11th will now be a workshop associated with the proposed amendment to the Overlay District for Woodland Station. I am going to distribute to you this evening the draft, the draft ordinance that the city attorney had prepared, per direction from city council. And this ordinance was to remove development burdens, or perceived development burdens on future development, developers in Woodland Station, specifically to consider removing a design review committee that is functioning under the DDA. And so instead of having any hearings on this, last night at the city council meeting, they decided not to move forward with the first reading, and rather asked for a planning commission to take this up and look at it more closely before it goes, moves forward to a public hearing. So I'm giving you homework tonight to look over the draft ordinance, the design review, the design criteria. Those were established back in April of 2007. And then we will have a very robust work session on July 11th.
Then we'll have another meeting after that.
And then we will determine whether you're ready to schedule a public hearing. It may take a couple of drafts, a couple of work sessions to work through this, so I don't think that city council is in that much of a big hurry. They sent it back to you all to take a closer look at it.
Will this be quasi judicial?
No, this is legislative.
Okay.
This is your legislative hat.
So what you can do is you can talk to other people on both sides of it, so we're not gonna discuss it tonight, we're not gonna take anything from the audience. Read it, you know every, you would know the players involved, you wanna talk to people, get their opinions. Since it's legislative, you're more than welcome to do that, and they're more than welcome to contact you.
And is the workshop open to the public?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, it's a normal public work session.
So it's gonna be at 7 o'clock on July 11th?
July 11th. So, and I'm letting you know, we did send a public notice to the newspaper, we needed to do that, but we will amend that agenda and just have it as a work session.
So we should order pizza and sit around.
We can send this to you, but I'm gonna give it to you in hard copy tonight.
You have contact.
Okay, now we're gonna adjourn from this, and we're gonna go to a work session on those two amendments, correct?
Yes.
We're gonna do that tonight, and I need a motion to adjourn. Any, any reports from this group? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Now we're gonna, five minutes, three minutes, body stop, then we're gonna start the next one.
Start the next.